We'll call to order tonight's Committee of the Whole for August 6, 2024. I am not Mayor Anders. Mayor Anders is under the weather and so therefore I am filling in for his stead. So we have the minutes for July 16, 2024. Do I have any questions, comments, or a move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second, all in favor of the minutes for July 16? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next is the Greenspace Advisory Board. That is my responsibility as Mayor Protem to make a nomination. We had one vacancy term begins August 8, 2024, ends August 7, 2028. We had an incumbent, Maureen McMichael, who served one full term. McMichael did not seek a second term. We had one applicant, Anne Leader, so I'd like to nominate Dr. Anne Leader.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any comments or any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I know we only have one applicant for one vacant position, but living in Auburn, we get the benefit of a huge talent pool. I mean, where else are you going to get an archaeology professor and PhD? And she seems like a great candidate. I haven't met her, but her resume looks outstanding. I hope others have talked to her directly and I think she will hopefully do a fine job.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Anne Leader is in Ward 6 and I know her quite well and she's an energetic, excellent candidate, a terrific advocate on a number of different issues, and I think she was an excellent addition to this board.
Any further comments? All right, we have a motion and second, all in favor for Anne Leader. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will confirm that appointment in the Committee of the Whole, in the consent agenda. All right, questions on the agenda? City Manager Crouch. Any questions?
I don't have anything for you unless you have something for me.
Any questions for City Manager? All right, seeing none. Do I have a move to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we will convene our regular scheduled meeting in about two and a half minutes. All right, we will call to order the regularly scheduled meeting for August 6, 2024. Again, I am not Mayor Anders. I am standing in for him. He is under the weather this evening and is, sorry, he could not be here. Lindsey with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
Oh, Blunt.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Foreman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Allegiance at a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. All right, we have, under Mayor and Council Communications, in the Committee of the Whole, we made a nomination for Anne Leader for the Greenspace Advisory Board, which we will confirm in the consent agenda. And right now, first of the month, we always honor our Employee of the Month as well as our Service Awards.
We're proud today to introduce you to our August Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from Allison Edge, our Finance Director, and Heidi Lowry, our Accounting and Financial Reporting Manager. I am pleased to nominate Erica Sprouse as the Employee of the Month for August 2024. Erica began her career with the city in August of 2006 and over time has advanced in her current role as Principal Accountant. During her tenure, she obtained a Master's of Business Administration from Troy University and earned her Certified Public Accountant License. Erica's primary responsibility is leading the accounting and budgeting duties for the city and Water Board enterprise funds. This includes the city sewer and solid waste activities and the Water Board's water utility. During 2023, the city and the Water Board conducted rate studies for solid waste and water simultaneously. Erica was the lead on both studies, which required communication and coordination with two separate rate consultants. She ensured that all the information was gathered in a timely manner and that appropriate analysis was conducted throughout each study. Erica eagerly accepts new challenges and projects. Recently, she helped train staff in other departments that have experienced vacancies. She spent hours working with Economic Development Financial Manager to learn things that she had not previously done to then guide and train a new employee. Erica also stepped in to cover accounting and financial reporting for the Industrial Development Board. She learned the day-to-day accounting responsibilities as well as participated in the publication of the IDB's annual report. Erica's knowledge, experience, and teamwork mentality enabled her to jump right in and handle these financial duties with little guidance. Erica's expertise and dedication have greatly contributed to the city of Auburn's reputation of excellence in financial reporting. She is conscientious, reliable employee who cares greatly about her work and how it affects the citizens of Auburn. It is for these reasons and more that we nominate Erica as the August 2024 Employee of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you. spent their tenure and time. We don't normally have somebody in our audience, but we have our own Greg Nelson, so congratulations on 20 years. And then a special note for our retirees, David Ponder and Renata Sanford Turk for their tenure and time serving our city upon their retirement. Committee of the Whole, we've discussed, and I will start with a few announcements and then we'll go down the line, see if anybody else has any. Just wanted to remind everybody, tonight is National Night Out. It will be at the area around Duck Sanford, and so that goes on until about 8:00 PM. Is that correct this evening?
7:30.
7:30, okay. So if you're listening on the radio or if you're following us on social media and you still have time to go and visit and take advantage of coming back together for National Night Out. Also, on July 27, I had the honor of roasting the mayor at the Greater Peace Community and Development Corporation, and it was a fun evening and an opportunity to poke a little bit of fun at the mayor for a good cause, for the different programming that Greater Peace provides for our communities. Also, just reminder that free parking is in downtown going on now until the 16th as we await the arrival of our new freshmen and upperclassmen, but I will state that we already have some arrivals of sororities because they're getting ready for a recruitment that's upcoming, so please be patient with our new faces and friends. And then also, Auburn City Schools begins this Thursday, so also, as we have different traffic patterns that start to emerge, please remember to slow down, have grace, and understand that everybody's in the same boat. And just note that school zones will be enforced beginning on Thursday, the 8th. Do we have any other announcements?
Mayor Protem, real quick, we are having trouble with the YouTube stream, so if people are listening on the radio and trying to locate that, we're fine on Facebook, and if you go to auburnalabama.org/agenda, there's a second link for something called Agenda Integrated Meeting Player, that's working as well, but we're having some trouble with YouTube at the moment.
Okay.
For our live stream.
Thank you for that update. Any other announcements?
Yes, I have an announcement, Mayor Protem. Thank you. Many of you will already know that in Opelika, they had another fire downtown on First Avenue, and one of the old buildings in the cotton mill section of Opelika. And on behalf of, I work for Opelika Fire Department, and on behalf of Chief Boyd, I would like to express our appreciation to Director Matthews, to Chief Langford, Chief Jordan, and Chief Datinoff, who brought out, when we called for mutual aid, they assisted us extinguishing that fire with a ladder truck and a pumper truck from Auburn, and it really made all the difference. It was a tough building to extinguish because it was surrounded by other buildings and residences, and we managed to save some of the building, but it had the potential to be a terrible, terrible fire, and we certainly appreciate all the assistance and we really honor the idea of mutual aid between our two cities, and thanks again for all your assistance.
Thank you, Councilman Parsons. Any other announcements? All right, we will move to Auburn University Communications. Mr. Stoudt, for the benefit of those listening, will you introduce yourself and what you do?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
My name is Jack Stoudt. I am an incoming senior at Auburn University. I am the Director of City Relations for our Student Government Association, and I have the honor and privilege to come to these meetings and give a report about some of the things going on in Auburn and share it with the community and try and share that relationship and expand on that. There's a couple of things going around in Auburn this week. School's starting up pretty soon, so I guess I'll go ahead and get right into it. Early move-ins started last Friday and will continue throughout the week with a lot of the sorority members. Bid Day will be this Saturday, the 17th, and classes will officially begin Monday, the 19th. There's kind of a little leeway in the middle there. So in the meantime, B.BAMA Food Drive is hosting their B.BAMA Boardwalk on August 15th. It's going to have food, games, rides, and prizes, but most importantly, it's a good opportunity to get new students involved on the campus. It's in that limbo period where students are moved in on campus but don't really have classes, their parents drop them off at their dorms, it's like, all right, now what? And there's a really cool event where they can go and get involved. Since 1994, B.BAMA Food Drive has raised over 8 million pounds of food to help fight food insecurity across the state of Alabama. It's something that our students care a lot about, and we're really proud to have that kick off at the beginning of the year. One more thing I wanted to mention is we are having mokas with the mayor on September 16th. We got the date finalized for that. We'll have some more details regarding that and the relationship that we're expanding upon this fall. So thank you, guys, for the opportunity to come up here and share some of those things. And War Eagle.
War Eagle, thank you. I did joke and made a little joke about Ron on the lawn, which did not happen, so may want to bring that back. All right, now's the time for Citizens Communications for Items on the Agenda. This is for Items on the Agenda. You have five minutes, and please give your name and address for the record, and note these are for Items on the Agenda. There are two public hearings under resolutions, so if you're here to speak on one of those items, we ask that you please hold your comments for that time. Is there anyone that would like to speak for Items on the Agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move into City Manager's Communications.
I have no communications. Are you ready for the consent agenda?
Yes, we are.
Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Anyone have any items they'd like to remove? No? All right, I believe we can move forward. Do we have a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved.
We have no ordinances this evening, so we're moving to resolutions. Item 10A is a request for revised conditional use approval of a performance residential development, which is a multi-unit development for the addition of three residential units to be located at 1415 Sarah Lane in the Development District Housing Zoning District. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its July 11th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Is there any conversation? All right, I'll open the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this item, you have an opportunity to come and give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there any conversation or comments or questions on this item? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Item 10B authorizes an outdoor cafe permit for Taquerita LLC at 155 North College Street. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. I will open the public hearing. If anybody would like, wish to come forward and speak on this item, you may do so. You may give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. All right, seeing none. I will close the public hearing. Any comments on this item?
Just a question or two. This concerns 155, 157 North College, I think, to...
You rely on our development staff, this is 155 and the...
Yes.
Okay, and right now, the front of those buildings are being taken off, I think, and do you have anybody here that can speak to the vision of what this is going to look like and the changes that will be necessary, or can the staff do that?
Hold on just one moment. So we want to clarify, one quick thing is the outdoor cafe permit would be entirely independent of anything they're doing relative to the facade from an approval standpoint. So your consideration, fine to ask the question, it just needs to be relative to whether or not you're okay with an outdoor cafe permit.
Okay. What are we voting on tonight, exactly?
Just the outdoor cafe permit, not a zoning-related matter. It's just about whether or not they can utilize X amount of outdoor space for outdoor dining.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Yeah, so like City Manager referenced, that the facade work that is happening is completely separate from the outdoor cafe permit, and so they are ripping off the, I guess, what's on the facade currently, and they're going to strip it down to the brick and they're going to paint it, and then they're going to redo the windows. And so that was an entire process where they had to comply with what the approved paint colors are for the downtown. There was a review process of that. We went back and forth just about the measurements and what percentages they were going to get to for the fenestration, but it has been reviewed and it has been approved, and just to clarify for everybody, and it was also, we talked with the applicant, completely separate, the outdoor cafe permit has to do with a separate application that they submitted and what they're trying to do.
Real quick, Justice, what is fenestration?
Yeah, so fenestration is the amount, it's the windows in the front building of the facade in this, that way, when you're walking through a commercial area, you like to have eyes on the street. That way, you can see into the building and people in the building can see outside. It gives more character than just kind of having a blank wall, and so it's a percentage of the front facing of the building that you can see through that has a window in it. So we have standards for that in the downtown to just kind of maintain a certain character and that vibrancy on the street.
So this is much like Melon Mushroom has outdoor dining.
As you see, permeated throughout the downtown, so you have to have a five-foot clear zone at a minimum due to Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility. They comply with that, and we previously had another use here that had outdoor cafe, but we don't allow transfer of a license, so, yeah. I want to clarify, totally fine to know what's going on with the facade, but I don't want you to think you were voting on a facade, because it's just whether or not, and I will be clear on all of these, as long as they have appropriate alcohol licenses, they are allowed to serve in this area, and that's every space we have downtown, if they have alcohol licenses, you're allowed to have beverages to that point, because this allows the ABC Board to consider this part of the property, which is under lease by them and part of their license area.
And the area is contained with a rod iron?
It's required to have certain barriers, both by us and the ABC Board.
Do you have any further questions? Okay, any other questions? Any comments? I have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Item 10C1 authorizes a contract with Barge Design Solutions for Task Order SWR 052024 for professional engineering services for the Northwest Auburn Sewer System Force Main and List Station project in the amount of $267,030.
Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any conversation or comments, questions? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10C2 authorizes a contract with Beasley Construction Services Incorporated for the construction of the Ann Pearson Park project in the amount of $1,851,150. This project will include the construction of trails, playground, restrooms, pavilion, parking, and turn lanes on Shelton Mill Road.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things that I found out from the City Manager and the staff that I thought the citizens would like to know about. Pearson Park is 47 acres, so it's a pretty good chunk of land. There is 5,800, approximately 5,800 linear feet of walking paths, so more than a mile of walking paths will be built through the property, and it's still being thought out, I think. Is that fair to say?
What is being thought out?
The concept of the park and the amenities.
No, no, we are complete. There's a conservation overlay on this for the Alabama-Georgia Land Trust, and we can only do X amount of things out here in a certain size. So basically, it's a nuance in the agreement, but other than if disc golf goes, which the Parks and Recreation Director tells you in the long term she does not think it will be there, this is finite for the park. This is what you will get.
Okay, do you think the Parks and Rec Director would like to comment on that?
Well, one moment. In fairness to her, she was not here when this deal was negotiated. I want to remind everybody, this is the Auburn University Real Estate Foundation. We're on a very long-term lease for this property. It is not city-owned property, and thanks to the gift of a very generous anonymous donor, this allowed this to happen where they were able to swap some property around, and so being that it has a big conservation easement, we are not allowed to have football games here and other things there can be. We've talked about before, it's fine to throw a frisbee with your child, or throw a baseball, or throw a football, or do those kinds of things, but we can't have organized sports here because of the, to honor the Alabama-Georgia Land Trust covenant, we have to be very careful. So that's why when we say the amount of activities and trails, and they're being kept very natural, is all along the lines of what we said we would do and what they have approved.
Will this be pet-friendly?
We're not having a dog park here, but...
We will not have a dog park, but yes, it'll be pet-friendly like our other parks.
And you want to respond to the disc golf, please?
Yes. So we, at this time, are not recommending disc golf to be on this particular parcel, but you probably will see discussion of disc golf at some future properties.
I do think this is a much-needed park on the north side of town, so very appreciative of the University Foundation, Real Estate Foundation, and the donor in making this available for long-term use for the city and its residents. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Moderator, is it a 30-year lease? Is that right? Or do we...
I need to go back and recall. Huh?
Sorry.
25.
No, I thought it was longer than that. I would have to look that up, Max. It's something we just approved two months ago. I just don't have it on the top of my head. We'll get that to you in a minute.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
So did I hear you say that this park will not accommodate, like, events and stuff?
We're not, we're not supposed to hold large concerts out here or other things. This is not meant to host City Fest or something like that. It needs to be muted. There are limited things, and we'll continue. The Alabama-Georgia Land Trust has been wonderful to work with. They're very flexible, and so there's some things we need to approve through them. If we had a small movie in the park where we're not having 4,000 people there, if we have 100 people there, we're probably fine, but this is not a park where we intend to host a lot of events, because again, we are only spending money on the improvements. We paid nothing for the land, and we're paying $10 a year to use the land for the entirety of the lease.
Would it be available for, say, a celebration, a birthday party, a family reunion?
Again, depends on the size of the event. A family reunion could exceed possibly, so those are things that we'll have to work out in our policies for use of the pavilion when we get closer to opening.
Okay, thank you.
Would the city maintain?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So it's meant to be a passive park for walking the trails, has a small playground, that kind of thing.
Yes, sir.
That large, open area that doesn't look like it's going to be disc golf, will it just be a large, open area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
The playground, will it be comparable to, let's say, like Denny's Park, or something along those lines?
Very similar.
Anything further? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, hold on just a minute. Move my papers back around. Here we go. Sorry, I lost my spot. All right, we have authorized that. Item 10C authorizes the purchase of one 2024 Deemer's MXP ambulance body rescue truck from Emergency Equipment Professionals Incorporated for the fire department in the amount of $320,730.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Are any comments or questions?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So we have one of these right now, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's the one we bought from Smith Station.
Correct, in June of 2022.
And it has some maintenance issues.
It's long had an exhaust issue that required repair. That still needs to be repaired, but it is functional.
That's correct.
Yeah, I saw it on the way over here, in fact, hit it out. All right, and long-term, what is the long-term plan for this type of vehicle? How many do we anticipate buying over the years?
That's something we plan to talk to you about during the 2025 budget. Right now, we're only, we were going to propose all of this for the 2025 budget, however, we're in a situation where we have a purchasing opportunity in the moment, and so right now, it's just one truck planned. In the long-term, and again, we'll talk in more detail, we may choose to add two more to cover varying parts of the city, but we're ramping up with our advanced medical life support that we've moved forward, where we've added a lot of paramedics, we've added different heart medications, heart monitors, different levels of service. It's something we wanted to talk in more detail, but right now, the only thing that will be proposed is this one truck. We're watching rollout and determining what's going on. I think, as you saw in some information I sent, we have had 17 transports this calendar year thus far compared to a much larger number of East Alabama Health Transporting. Our neighbors in Opelika also utilize a similar service. This is, this is when unfortunately, sometimes the ambulance is on the way, but we have somebody that critical. If our rescue truck is there first and the on-scene supervisor is determined they need to go, we'll take them immediately. And so right now, this is giving us the ability, if our current rescue truck goes down completely from a mechanical perspective, we have no backup and cannot offer this service. So the goal to do this in 2025 was to have a front-running truck that is newer, and then we've got the 2018 truck from Smith Station, there's 122,000 miles on it as our backup, or in large events to run them both.
All right, and where's the current one stationed? Which station?
Fire station number one, right here.
Right here? And where's the, will they both be stationed here?
Mr. Matthews.
The fire chief hasn't determined the exact home for the reserve rescue truck, once the new one, if we are able to acquire a new one, once it arrives, but it will most likely be at either Station 6 or Station 5. Those are the stations that have the space for it, but again, it will be utilized in a reserve capacity unless we need it for large events.
So as a reminder, you know where 6 is, because it's new Station 5 in Auburn Technology Park South, here on the extreme edges of the city, is where it would likely sit.
And you anticipate these trucks all being staffed with paramedics?
I'll have Mr. Matthews explain. Everybody's a firefighter and a paramedic that's on these, Mr. Matthews.
Correct, so all of our staff are at least EMT certified. That's basic certified. Each ALS operation, each engine or rescue truck that has ALS operation on it has to have at least one paramedic rolling at the time of operation.
I'm fully supportive of giving the department what they need, what they recommend, but I would like to see some kind of a strategy for where we're going in the future during the budget presentations.
Yep, we had that strategy in 2022. We've got it now. This is just a matter of talking to the council about it typically, as I have indicated in an email. It's not my preference to bring things to you outside the budget cycle, but we have the opportunity to get this delivered this fiscal year and to save 15%, so that's why we moved it forward before we've had a chance to talk about it. we've had a chance to talk about it. Absolutely fine. We have long-term plans for everything that we do, but those are usually generated at the staff level and often talked about during the budgeting process.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further questions? All right, we have a motion. In a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Just a quick on the, on the lease for Pearson Park, it is 50 years.
50 years, okay.
Item 10C4 authorizes the purchase of one Peterbilt 40-yard front loader and dual-cart tipper garbage truck from Environmental Products Group Incorporated in the amount of $411,883.80.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion. Second, any comments or questions regarding this agenda item? Yes, sir.
Yes, I appreciate it. I noticed that the contract or the proposal includes buyback options. Have we ever taken advantage of that, or do we resell old equipment or back through these con, I know we make them available for the state and whatnot. We sell them as surplus, but these, this, could you explain what this buyback option?
The buyback option is, is something that is open to us, that we can utilize later if we elect to. If we see that it's costing us a little bit more to maintain, then we can offer into that buyback. But it is something that we have talked about with finance, but right now, we are not in the buyback option for that. We purchase our trucks and we maintain our trucks.
So, that's kind of a fallback if we decide we need it. There's a two-year and a three-year buyback option in this proposal?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything further?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Was the previous truck that we're replacing used for commercial dumpster collection?
Absolutely.
Yes, it was used for rear loader dumps, dumpster collection. So, we had six-yard dumpsters and eight-yard dumpsters that we used.
So, we're not, we're not giving up capability here by using it for a different purpose? So, it's filling the exact same usage that the old?
The exact same use, except it's on the front end side. And so, later on, we will have different dumpsters that we're putting out in order to use this truck for.
Okay.
And this particular equipment requires only one operator versus two?
That's correct. This allows us to run two commercial crews at the same time.
Right, thank you. Anything further? All right, we have a motion. In a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tim Witten, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
All right, is there any other business?
There is not.
Okay, we'll move into Citizens' Open Forum. I'd like to remind you that if you'd like to come and speak to about, speak to us about anything on your mind, you have three minutes. And we ask that you give us your name and address for the record. We ask that you do speak and address the council and keep, keep it respectful and have decorum.
Mayor Pro Tim Witten, one quick thing. We do have a, a rule. It's rule number six about visuals. Visuals must be submitted to the city manager by 12:00 PM on the day of council meetings. Otherwise, they may not be shown before the council. So, you will see at least one speaker tonight pre-submitted. And absolutely, that's why you'll see them on the screen tonight. Any other visuals have not been approved for this evening because they were not submitted by the noon deadline.
Thank you. Would that individual like to come forward and go ahead and speak, or do we have others in front?
My name is Robert Wilkins, 261 Denton Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council members. Hope the mayor gets well. And Mayor Pro Tim, next time you do some roasting, I'd love to roast the mayor. And also Pearson Park, I plan to be around after the leases ended. I'll be 119. So, what I want to talk about is what is a poll or survey? A sample or collection, collection of opinions on a subject, taken from either a selected or random group of persons or for the purpose of analysis. We at the Auburn Voice take various polls. Some are general, some are specific, some are controlled, and some are not. We use the platform, nextdoor.com to doing these polls. There's over 26,000 Auburn citizens that are on the platform, nextdoor.com. I mean to read polls, but a lot of them don't respond. Yeah, I think a lot of them are frightened to speak. They're afraid that something may happen to them. Next door, when they do the polls, not, not even the person who puts up the poll or the moderator or the next-door executive will ever know who voted or how they voted. The next-door polls are completely private. Only to know is you the voter or how to vote. You're allowed to put six choices on it. So, I did one back in March of '25 of this year. It was, there were 2,300 views of that poll, 26 comment, and 174 people responded to the survey. The question was, what do you perceive, what do you perceive as the number-one issue in Auburn? We, as an Auburn citizen, are proud to be living in Auburn. Great teams always need improvement. Give us your input. Election month date changes, so students can be involved. Because students get here about a week before the election. We feel like that that's not a good thing. But anyway, it was put up as one of the, the things. Only 3% said that that was an issue. Of course, when you put up six things, they're going to go with the one that they think is the most important. Out of the 170-something people, there were five that said that. Next one was improvement of police relationship in certain areas. And of course, I brought that up a couple of times. And Councilman Dawson, anytime we deal with police, he, he seems to be very sensitive to that. The lack of youth recreational facilities. I know we're just about to finish Lake Wilmore Recreational Center, but I said right after they, y'all approved the $22 million, I know Mayor Pro Tim said, you know, we just spent 22 million. Well, I, I think there's an awful lot of need for recreational for all these people. Next was executive, aggressive control, oh goodness, a private property, 11, 6%. More affordable housing, 26% of the people. Overall building, overbuilding of downtown, 98.
Thank you for your time this evening.
It didn't bang.
That's my fault.
Yeah. He's only been here 20 years. You think he can get this straight?
I was waiting. Yeah, I added too much stuff in my speech.
Thank you. You know, I'm just kidding, right?
Give him a ding, make him feel better.
I'll try it.
Yes, ma'am.
We missed the ding. Susan Bolt, 1188 East University Drive. Tonight, I want to talk about fairness. Fairness usually has a component of compromise where one side gets what they want in a way that the other side can't complain about it. Fairness usually treats people with similar circumstances in a consistent manner. With ordinance 3288, people who are similarly situated have not been treated the same or fairly. Eleanor Roosevelt is quoted as saying, "Justice cannot be for one side alone, but must be for both." Tonight, I want to show the injustice of ordinance 3288 by showing the city maps for permitted and non-permitted areas for short-term rentals. Green on the screen signifies the permitted areas. Gray is the non-permitted areas. On this particular map, if you look on some of the areas, you'll see that houses and lots are divided. You'll see that there are people on one side of the street are not permitted to do short-term rentals, where on the opposite side of the street, they are permitted to do short-term rentals. You'll see adjacent properties where one's permitted, one is not. My question is, how on earth is that fair? Next slide, please. On this one, this is the Bent Creek area, and you'll see that the green area on one side of the street, short-term rentals are permitted. On the other side of the street, they are not permitted. I don't understand how that is equitable, how that is justifiable. I don't understand how that is detrimental to N.C. neighborhoods on one side of the street and not detrimental on the other side of the street. If you'll notice, the lake there in that area, it's permissible on one side of the lake and not permissible on the other side. Next slide, please. Here, nope, let's go to the next one, sorry. Okay, this is Sanford Avenue across from Auburn High School. If you see there to the left, that is an apartment community where the zoning splits that apartment complex. So, it's permissible in part of that complex. It's not permissible in the other. I could go on, but I am limited by time. The mayor on 316, 2021, read a statement that said his desire was to preserve the sanctity and integrity of the N.C. zoning and neighborhoods. Later, he stated that ordinance 3288 was just a starting point. Neither of those statements have been proven to be true. I come up here meeting after meeting to present you with facts about this ordinance in hope that the STR5 will see that they aired in the decision to pass 3288. I ask you again tonight to work toward a fair and just resolution. Martin Luther King Jr. is quoted as saying, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." My parting thought is a quote by H. Jackson Brown Jr. "Live so that when your children think of fairness, caring, and integrity, they think of you." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolt. Anyone else who would like to speak to us this evening? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I'll reopen the public hearing. I mean, sorry, Citizens' Communications. Not a public hearing.
Martha Shamp, 307 Camellia Drive. The library is my only concern, protecting the children at our library from pornography, which the director orders and y'all pay for. I do have, thank you for alerting me to not bring my visual. I do have a rather involved visual I was going to use tonight, so I may be a little bit short, but I'm sure you'll be glad. The Alabama, I mean, the library's hand in glove with an evil pro-homosexual organization, the ALA, American Library Association. It is run by a self-professed, publicly-professed Marxist lesbian. We pay dues to that disgusting organization, and they're a radical left-wing group trying to promote non-pro-family policies of all sorts. And I believe our library board takes way too many marching orders from this group, the ALA. We need to cut ties with them immediately and not pay one more farthing to that crowd. The books in the library are indecent. Many of them, when opened up and looked at, the graphics and explicit material is, is obvious. They're grooming children for obscene acts later in life. In fact, early in life, if they can possibly, you know, get them signed up for a sex change operation. This is what it's all leading to. Perversion paid for by Christian dollars. I read this verse at the last, I believe it was the June meeting of the library board. I'm going to read it again. And afterwards, something horrible was told to me by one of the female members of the library board. You probably can tell who it was, but 1 Timothy 1:10, "The law is aimed at the unruly, the impious and sinful, the irreligious and matric, the irreligious and worldly, and patricides and matricides, murderers and fornicators, perverts, kidnappers, liars, perjurers, all whose behavior flouts the wholesome teaching which, which conforms with the gospel entrusted to me, the gospel which tells of the glory of God in his eternal felicity." 1 Timothy 1:10, that's the words of St. Paul. I'll be back with my visual. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shamp. Anyone else before we close Citizens' Communications? All right, seeing none, I'll close.
Mayor Pro Tim, if I may, I want to be very, very, very clear. The Auburn Public Library is not a member of the American Library Association and does not pay any dues to that organization.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, do we have a move to adjourn?
I have a, just a response to Ms. Shamp. My family and I went to the final Auburn Public Library event. It was a Pokemon event. There were activities. You could swap your Pokemon cards. You could make some Play-Doh Pokemon figures. You could have some snacks. There were hundreds of people there. Lots of families, lots of kids, having a great time. It's, it's off-putting to hear an accusation as vile as what you're saying about the wonderful staff at our library. It's, I, I hope the audience are listening. And I hope that they're making their own decisions about how they parent their children. I'm very proud of the library. I love it. And I'm there at least a couple of times a week. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, do we have a move to adjourn? We did?
No.
Oh, you would like to make it up?
Yeah. Not about that. It was about an earlier comment about Denny's Park. I thought I would piggyback on that. Somebody asked if the new park was going to be a dog park, and it's not, but Denny's Park is. And it has a lake, who knew? And it has trails. Now, it could use some sprucing up. I would submit, but it is a wonderful place. It is, has a lot of potential. And I would, I think it's one of those hidden Auburn secrets that's kind of underutilized, but it's a good place. It's a nice park. So, I just thought I would mention that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I, I have a question to the city manager. And it ain't about all of it. I just noticed going out in Martin Luther King, streetscape that they've done now, and it looks really good to me. The only problem I think I have with it, and I know it may not be anything that can be addressed, but I'm thinking that here in Auburn, the streetscapes, the new streetscapes that they've redone and everything, it's not really, they're, they're not really in, in a neighborhood where there's houses and stuff. So, it looks all tacky when, when people putting their trash out side the road. And I don't know if it's, it's a way that maybe there could be a site that people could actually put trash, you know, like chairs or mattresses and stuff like that, that they want to, instead of having it side the road? Because sometime it'd be out there for like a week before it's actually picked up. So, you know, I don't know if we maybe could create some type of site where people can take that type of stuff too, to be picked up, because it just really looked tacky at once, you know? And, and thanks for grooming it, having the contractors to groom it and everything, but it's just, it just sort of kind of like a pet peeve of mine.
Well, in this time of year, it gets extra special around the entirety of the city as we see our, one of our biggest assets, our students, come and go from their complexes. And right now, our environmental services team works morning, noon, and night, and every day of the week, trying to, to keep up with the volume because it's a little bit of trash amnesty where what we do is we prioritize picking it up over whether or not it's overflowing from the can or whatever. And so, it takes a tremendous amount of time. Among our major corridors, Glen Avenue is one of them. We have residential. This happens there. It happens on sections of Morse Mill Road. And other than people being willing to take it to a proper waste disposal facility, we don't offer Katrina for that, that style of waste. We do on recycling, but everything else unfortunately has to go curbside. I hear you, and we do see it throughout the city. One of our best, best things that we try to do is we try to enforce, it's only supposed to go out the night before pickup, you know, not six days in advance. And sometimes people do that, and we do try to enforce that. But, and sometimes our team just stops and picks it up early because they don't want to look at it either. So, we're cognizant of that, and I understand that. And yes, it doesn't make some of our corridors look the best, but it is the best way to deal with it. When you go to large cities and you're out later at night, you see piles of garbage on the sidewalk. All their garbage bags are just piled, piled up everywhere. And so, you have to put it somewhere, as Katrina always says, and we do our best to hide it, but we don't have a good mechanism for large furniture and things to go anywhere else unless somebody wants to haul it to a landfill.
Okay.
But we're always happy.
I'm not really complaining. I'm not complaining. It just, it just looks so tacky, you know? And I know sometimes that's on the neighbors and whoever putting the trash out there and putting, putting it out sort of early. If it's, if your trash man don't run until Tuesdays, but you got it out that Wednesday after they done ran to the next Tuesday, it, it looks bad across there. But if there's nothing you can do about it, then that's, you know, they're just going to have to weigh on my shoulder.
I hear you. We can always do a PR camp. We can always do a PR campaign of trying to encourage people. There are things that we can do, that we're happy to do, to try to encourage people to be mindful of that as best that we can. Katrina?
Let me just add one little thing to that, because we do run incoming routes to the city, and Martin Luther King would be one of those, just like East Glen, Morse Mill, those areas, College, South College, North College, and those are run on Fridays. So, we do everything we can to make sure that we're collecting all the large and bulky debris, that anyone that puts anything out after the fact, it, it is collected. So, on that area, we did have some people to move out, we did have some things to happen on that side of the street, and so we have dealt with it that way. And if anyone wants to call us for pickup, they missed it. We're here for that service, so we will provide that service the next day, okay?
All right, thank you.
And I also just really want to commend our environmental services staff. This is one of their toughest times of the year, and then Public Works is also working feverishly. We're very sensitive to move in, move out, main corridors, people coming into town, football season's upon us, you know, our beautification teams are working extra hard, our litter teams, the city staff in general, but those departments bear a big brunt of, of move-in, and then engineering services is dealing with certificates of occupancy along with inspection services for new buildings, and getting sidewalks open and new lanes built on Farmville and Gay Street. We've seen some changes of turn lanes and a lot going on right now, and the month of August gets busy, busy, but it will get done before our first football game.
Right. All right, now do we have an motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned.